Generally do. I will look into that.
Chair, relax.
Okay, good. I will now call to order the March 31, 2022 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Gary Schmitt, Administrator, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair Smith. First staff support today: Shannon Bays, Clerk to the Board; Stephen Maticore, County Council. Roll call, Commissioner Shoal.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Present.
Chair Smith.
Here. Thank you, Gary. I will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much, people. Good morning. We are holding this meeting both personally and virtually. General public comment will be taken at the usual time and is listed on the agenda. The public is welcome to sign up to testify. Please use the blue cards and put them in the basket on the small table to your left as you enter the room. The staff will pick them up during the meeting. Registration for public comment via Zoom is available online. We will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's rules of order will be followed and enforced in this meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Gary, can you introduce the first item?
Yes, Chair Smith. First is a public hearing, and it is. It is a first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 7.07 Vehicle Registration Fee of the Clackamas County Code. Mike Besner, Assistant Director of Transportation and Development, will first make a presentation. Go ahead, Mike.
Mike Besner, Assistant Director of Transportation Development. Commissioners, thanks for having me this morning. As Gary mentioned, I am here to talk about a proposed revision to the county code regarding vehicle registration fee. The current fee is $30 for most vehicles, $15 for motorcycles. And those vehicles include utility and light trailers, which are trailers under 8,000 pounds, which includes a lot of horse and boat trailers that people have. In the time since this has been in effect, some of the feedback that staff have gotten have been about trailers, not a lot about vehicles, but about trailers. And so we took this topic to the Community Road Fund Advisory Committee, which is the board-appointed committee that we talk about all VRF issues with. And they supported a recommendation of reducing that fee to $5 a year for utility and light trailers. Since this was publicized, this hearing, we've gotten, staff at least, we've gotten two emails offering feedback. One opposed the change and one was in favor of the change. So I thought I'd at least pass that along to you. This change would reduce the revenue annually by about $350,000 out of a million, or 11 million, apology.
A second number again, please.
So we currently collect about $11 million a year, and that's, remember, 40% of that goes to cities and 60% of that goes to county projects. This would reduce the entire pot by, we collected about $350,000 in the last year from trailers, so, you know, it would, that amount would be significantly reduced by charging five instead of 30. But we think we still have enough annual revenue coming in that it wouldn't have a significant impact on the program that we have planned as a whole. If approved, staff would work with Oregon DMV on new agreements, and they have to do a whole bunch of stuff that I'm not going to sit here and try and tell you I completely understand, but involves a lot of programming, and they've told me. So it would take most of the year, so we think this would go into effect in about January, but we would certainly work to try and have it happen sooner. So respectfully request that you schedule a second reading and a public hearing for the ordinance on April 21st.
Thank you for that.
Thank you for that. I really appreciate the opportunity to reduce a fee in Clackamas County. I appreciate that this particular department, Transportation and Development, has worked very hard and been quite mindful of the budgets, what people are paying in. I look forward to the success on this. I do have a question. I can foresee some of my constituents asking me, okay, this board approved this ordinance on this date, but it doesn't come into effect in January. My trailer fee was due in September. I should get that reduction from the time that we make this legal until the time DMV does the paperwork. There's a gap in there that some people are going to get stuck on. What's your answer to that?
Well, I don't have a solution for them. I believe that it doesn't lawfully change until our agreement with DMV changes and DMV is able to hit that button. We don't have a system in place. I mean, it all goes through DMV. We, the county, collect none of this. It all goes through the state. It's a whole other process that we don't even have access to, and they write us a check every month.
So I think you answered the question. If it's up to the county, we may be able to do something, but we're not in charge of this. It's the Department of Motor Vehicles.
Correct.
Maybe the complaint should go there.
Yeah.
They can call us, of course.
Yeah, they can call us, and what I'm going to say is I'm going to make this happen as fast as I can.
Sure, sure. Well, thank you for your work. Commissioners, do you have any? Mark Shoal.
Yes, Mr. Besner. For trailers under 8,000 pound gross weight that would pay $5 a year.
Yep.
For registration, does that $5, will that $5 cover the administrative cost of actually licensing these trailers each year?
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Shoal.
Let me add, or would it be better for trailers under 8,000 pound gross to have zero fee?
Well, we have to charge something, and this is where the Oregon statutes are interesting. When we have a local registration fee, we have to charge what the state chart, the same classes that the state charges vehicle registration fees, with some exceptions that we're not allowed to charge, like an RV, for example. And these are all in ORS specifically. So we have to charge something. I should add that when we went to the committee, you know, we had thrown out $1 instead of $5, and the Community Road Fund Advisor Committee thought $1 was not enough, that trailers do impact the roads. And although they supported not paying 30, they thought that $5 was a fair amount for trailers.
I see. Thank you.
Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, I think what's confusing, and correct me where I'm wrong. I have a number of trailers, you know, some of which I no longer have, some I still have. Some of those are under 8,000 pounds. Most trailers under 8,000 pounds aren't licensed or registered, just so people know. So if anyone has a trailer that's not licensed, they're not going to see a reduction because they're not paying for anything. So that's one thing I want to say. For those folks that actually have a trailer that is licensed and registered, what is the ODOT portion that they currently pay for, currently, that they're not going to see? That, I think it should be clarified that there is a registration fee, and the total amount, state and county combined, isn't going to go to five? It's only going to be the county portion that's going to go to five.
No, that, yes, that is correct. Thank you, Commissioner Savis. I assume it's the same as a regular vehicle. I'll be honest, I don't know offhand. It's a good question. I should have had that.
I think it is.
Yeah. Now, if they're, I should add, I think if they're under 1,800 pounds, they don't have to register. I'm not an expert on Oregon DMV registration law, but depends on what you're hauling. Yeah, I don't know. But yeah, they're currently paying, or should be paying, or required by law to pay, a fee to the state, just like the people who have vehicles that pay us the $30 a year. They're already paying the state, I think it's in the 50s every year.
Yep. So want to just say that there's confusion about that, and we need to be prepared for that, because people might not understand that?
You're right. And it also goes on the length of the trailer where you need a license plate, and you buy your tags, and so it can get complicated, but I think most people understand, you know, what they need to do, I hope. And you know what? You folks will be able to answer those questions for us as our emails come in. I see a flashing light behind the glass. Is there a reason for that?
Are you muted, Chair? That's why there's a flashing light. I was on mute. Thank you. Commissioner Fisher, you're up.
Thank you, Chair Smith. I really like that, Mike, that you and your team brought this forward based on citizen participation and input. When we do some of the work we do from this dais, we often don't know how it ends up at the other end of the people that are implementing the decisions that we make. And this is how government should work. Really appreciate it. And just a message out there, we have wonderful constituent participation on many advisory boards throughout the county. Please know that this is one example of how your voice matters, and things do actually, they get to us here, and we can make changes when appropriate. So thank you for that. That is my hearing, my public hearing part of this conversation today.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Are we, we have exceeded the commisurate comments. Shannon, do we have anybody?
We do not have anyone registered online for this.
Yes.
I will now open the public hearing. On this, we've had board discussion. We see no blue cards. We see nobody wanting to testify on this. I would entertain a motion. I will close the public hearing, excuse me, and now I will entertain a motion. We have some bold language on page two, a third of the way down on the page. I know it's confusing, Commissioners.
I move that the clerk assign a number and read the ordinance by title only.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Shoal, for making the motion, and Commissioner Fisher for seconding the motion. Any further discussion on this? Well, we'll get through it. We're doing what we need to do. Okay. Shannon, please call the poll.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Shoal.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Yee-haw. Onto the second public hearing on this. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Chair, point of order. You'll want the clerk to read the ordinance by title only, and you'll also want to announce to the public that we will have a second public hearing on this matter on Thursday, April 21st.
I think you just did it for me. Shannon, please read the ordinance number.
Thank you, Chair. This is ordinance number 01-2022, amending Chapter 7.07 Vehicle Registration Fee of the Clackamas County Code.
Thank you, Shannon. Gary, what's next?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mike. Next is the consent agenda. Shannon, would you please read the consent agenda?
Yes. Apologies for the delay. Health Housing and Human Services, approval of Amendment Number 03 to a subrecipient grant agreement with Cota Inc. for Housing Assistance Program Services. This amendment extends the term of the agreement. Maximum compensation of $706,639.03 unchanged by this amendment. Agreement funded by federal and state funds provided by Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Approval of Amendment Number 1 to an intergovernmental agreement from the State of Oregon Housing and Community Services Department to administer low-income housing water assistance and winter shelter investment out of the cold programs. This amendment updates the definitions within the master agreement and one of the program elements. It does not change the value of the IGA funding through the State of Oregon Department of Housing and Community Services. No county general funds are involved. Approval of Amendment Number 2 to an intergovernmental agreement from the State of Oregon Housing and Community Services Department to administer Oregon Eviction, Diversion, and Prevention Program and COVID Energy Assistance Program. This amendment updates definitions, scope, and program elements. There is no dollar change. Funding through the State of Oregon Department of Housing and Community Services. No county general funds are involved. Approval of Contract Amendment Number 1 with Durgish LLC for on-call hotel rooms for temporary housing participants. This amendment adds $248,000 for a new maximum contract value of $830,400 funded through Federal Emergency Management Agency and Emergency Shelter Grant Funds. No county general funds are involved. Approval of Amendment Number 1 to the Agency Services Contract Agreement with SRS LLC for on-call hotel rooms for temporary housing participants. Increases the pool of funding available by $218,000 for a revised maximum value of $800,400 funded with Federal Emergency Management Funds and Emergency Shelter Grant Funds. No county general funds are involved. Approval of a Joint Reciprocal Parking Space Easement for the Sandy Health Center Project with the City of Sandy. The total cost to prepare the easement documentation was $1,500, funded through budgeted health centers division fund balance. No county general funds are involved. Approval of Change Order Number 8 for the Sandy Health Center Project with Bandlink Construction LLC. This change order adds a 30-day extension with no change in the total contract value. No county general funds are involved. Transportation and Development. Approval of a Contract with North Star Electric, Inc. for the Regional Freight ITS Project, which will improve reliability and safety for freight vehicles and the traveling public within the Clackamas and Wilsonville industrial areas of Clackamas County. Total contract value is $1,373,720, funded through Federal Surface Transportation Block Grant and the County Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Approval of a Contract with Stellar J Corporation for the South End Road Milepost 3.8 Project, which will stabilize the roadway and slope at that location. Total contract value is $3,272,707.25, funded through Federal Emergency Relief Funds in the amount of $2,936,600.22, and a 10.27% match of $335,107.03 funded through the County Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. The Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Approval of a Contract with Keefe Commissary Network LLC for inmate commissary services. Maximum contract value is $300,000, funded by the Jail's Inmate Welfare Services Fund. No county general funds are involved. Approval of Amendment Number 5 to the Cooperative Law Enforcement Services Agreement between the elected, sorry, between the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office and the United States Department of Agriculture Forest Service for patrol services in the Mount Hood National Forest. This amendment carries forward the unused portion of the 2021 operating plan in the amount of $76,809.30, funded by the USDA Forest Service. No county general funds are involved. Technology Services. Approval of a Service Level Agreement with MCI Metro for the lease of dark fiber on Clackamas County Broadband Exchanges Fiber Network. MCI Metro will pay a recurring lease fee of $21,112.80 annually for the four connections. The funding for this expansion of the CBX fiber network will be from the CBX budget and then reimbursed by MCI Metro. No county general funds are involved. Community Corrections. Approval of a Subrecipient Agreement between Community Corrections and Northwest Family Services for Community-Based Victim Services. Total agreement value is $78,960.48, funded through the State of Oregon Justice Reinvestment Grant. No county general funds are involved. Approval of a Subrecipient Agreement between Community Corrections and Clackamas Women's Services for Community-Based Victim Services. Total agreement value is $111,623.46, funded through the State of Oregon Justice Reinvestment Grant. No county general funds are involved. Disaster Management. Approval of and promulgation of the Emergency Operations Plan for Clackamas County. There's no financial impact. That is the end of that agenda.
Thank you, Shannon, for that. Does any commissioner wish to remove an item from this consent agenda?
No.
Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Shoal has moved for approval of the consent agenda, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Shannon, please take the poll.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Shoal.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. I will now recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Development Agency Board. Gary.
This is the Development Agency Consent Agenda. Shannon, would you please read the consent agenda?
Execution of a Disposition Agreement between the Development Agency and SJRFLC regarding a remnant piece of property on the northwest corner of southeast 82nd Avenue and Audi Street intersection. Upon closing, the agency will receive $138,000. No county general funds are involved. Approval of a First Amendment to the Post-Closing and Development Agreement between the Development Agency and Shanty Investments LLC regarding the property located on the northwest corner of the intersection of southeast 92nd Avenue and Johnson Creek Boulevard. This agreement extends the required date for substantial completion of the development until November 22, 2023, and the 25,000 security deposit provided by the developer will continue to be held in escrow. No county general funds are involved. That is the end of my agenda.
Thank you, Shannon. Does any commissioner wish to remove an item off of this consent agenda? Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the Development Agency Consent Agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Savis has moved for approval of this consent agenda item, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Shannon, would you please take the poll?
Commissioner Shoal.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. I will now adjourn as a Development Agency Board and convene as a Water Environment Services Board. Gary.
This is the Water Environment Services Board Consent Agenda. Shannon, would you please read the consent agenda?
Approval of Contract Number 5298 with RL Reimers Co. for the Kellag Creek Water Resource Recovery Facility Influent Pumps 2 and 4 Replacement Construction Project. Total contract value is $1,466,125, funded through West Capital Improvement Funds. No county general funds are involved.
Thank you. Does any commissioner wish to remove any item off of this consent agenda? Seeing none, any comments from Commissioners? I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Shoal has moved for approval of this consent agenda item. Commissioner Savis has seconded that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Shannon, please take the poll.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Shoal.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners. I will now adjourn as a Water Environment Services Board and convene as a Board of County Commissioners. Thank you, Shannon. Up next is Public Communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon Revised Statutes and County Code. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, we will not be reading them at the business meeting due to time constraints. I will now open the meeting for public testimony, and as always, I will take these cards in order as they were presented. And I hope I'm pronouncing your name correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, Rick Stigler. Would you please come forward, state your name, because I have a little note. It says, "One, Two, and Three" would like to go in this order, and that's what I'm trying to accommodate your wishes. Please, please state your name, your residence, and you will have three minutes.
My name is Rick Stigens.
Would you please sit down and speak into the microphone so we can record this? Thank you.
Okay.
And your name again?
My name is Rick Stigens. I reside at 1625 Edgewater Court in West Lynn. I'm here as a part of a team to ask for your assistance in reducing a loud noise attributable to jet skiers on the Willamette in the West Lynn neighborhood, and my partners will fill in more detail about that. I simply want to, as a resident, give testimony to how unlivable this noise makes our neighborhood. It begins now. They've already begun to show up with these jet skis doing acrobatics in the river off of Meldrum Bar, and they're there in the evening, they're there both days of the weekend, and through the summer, literally every evening and all day through the summer of the weekends, both Saturday and Sunday. And they make our neighborhood unlivable. We cannot be outside. Now, I'm not literally on the river. I'm a block away from the river, but even a block away, the noise is just outrageous. And so what we're attempting to do is to get the noise ordinance changed so that we can, we can find some help to alleviate the noise. I'm an avid boater and fisherman, and I've been in boats from age five, and I've watched the development of the technology associated with boat propulsion. And the development has been just incredibly productive, reducing the noise. There's no need to have, to have craft on the water with this level of noise. It's not necessary. The technology has long passed this. As a matter of fact, it's my understanding that it's no longer possible to purchase the technology, the jet ski technology, the two-stroke technology that these people are using. We simply ask for your assistance in reducing that noise level, and I'm just here as a citizen to tell you, we need help.
Well, Rick, I really thank you for coming forward on this. We have received some emails, one in particular, and I'm failing to recognize the name, and I've done some research on this topic.
Ah.
Yes, and you're correct about the two-stroke motors. However, people still own them. They are not outlawed.
They're not.
They will probably continue to use them. I have contacted the State Marine Board, and I've also reached out to State Senator Bill Kennermer, who also lives on the Willamette River. I don't know if you're aware of that, and he has a dock, and he has a boat, and he's very knowledgeable about waterway issues in the state of Oregon as he deals with them. He's offered various legislation to his colleagues in the legislature. Sometimes it passes, sometimes it doesn't, but he's very much up to date. Clackamas County Board of Commissioners will not assume jurisdiction on this issue, and you already know that before you came in. We don't have the jurisdiction on this. Currently, private conversations are occurring between State Senator Bill Kennermer, and I talked to him personally this week about it, and the State Marine Board. A resolution is coming within two weeks. Please be assured of that. I don't know what it is.
Nor do we.
And you know that, don't you?
Yeah.
You know that before you came here today, don't you?
Yeah, we, we.
Okay, let me finish my statement.
Right.
This board will use caution by recognizing that we have no authority on this issue. However, our sheriff has weighed in and said, whatever decision is made, that the sheriff's office will indeed enforce the decision. So thank you for coming forward and making this known, but I want to be very clear. I will repeat, this board will not assume any jurisdiction on this issue because we have no jurisdiction.
We understand.
On the waterways of this state, because they are controlled by the State Marine Board.
Board, we know that.
But I want to thank you for letting us know about this, because I was able to find out this information.
Good.
And kind of stir up the parties to get going on it.
Thank you for doing that.
You betcha. Thank you, Rick. I have Commissioner Savis who wants to make a comment.
I did read some of the communications on this topic, and I saw someone who had submitted in part of their communication a map, and it showed the decimal level in different areas, and it showed the section of Clackamas County having a higher decimal rating than, oh, maybe it was a state map. I'm not sure what it was, but, but I was kind of struck by the decimal rating. So if it is a state, I don't disagree with that. The county can't really, you know, enforce its own noise ordinance, but if we're the only one in the country, or the west coast, or this particular region with a, with a rating that much higher, allowable rating that much higher, you know, I guess my question is, is obviously a state action, not.
Well, why don't you just contact those people? Like I say, Commissioner Savis, this board has no authority to do that. I am sure that this decimal rating of whatever, 85, has been out there, and I don't know who did the measurement. I mean, maybe it's 60 at one, you know, at milepost, you know, 30, or maybe it's, it's 85 or whatever, or even higher than 85. We don't know who did the measurement. I can't give it attribution because I don't know, but the problem is being handled. Boy, my whole board lit up.
Chair, if I could just finish.
Yeah.
Chair, and that is, the other thing when I mentioned is that in my first six or seven years here in Clackamas County, I lived a block away from the Willamette River on the east side, across the way from you probably. And so I know how much noise there is typically, even with the allowable decimal rating probably, and it's always, you know, it can be in the wee hours of the night especially, sometimes, you know, it kind of wears on you when it's, you know, day in and day out. So I understand that, and I don't know how much the decimal rating will reduce that, but there will always be activity there. I also know property owners that live right on the river that are also concerned about, because it's just something that comes with living near the river or on the river. It's just inherent to some degree, but.
Absolutely, and we understand that, and as a boater, I really understand that. What's happening here is a special case of this particular technology being used that produces a level of noise that's absolutely outrageous and unacceptable, so we appreciate your.
Wish we didn't know what that decision is going to be.
Yeah.
I have no idea.
We don't either.
Senator Kennermer did not tell me.
No.
He said, "Okay, I will wait. I will trust the process," and this is a process.
Right.
Yes, thank you very much. We have Commissioners, Commissioner Schrader, you're up next.
Yeah, thank you for coming today. We've looked at all of the information that you've sent us. The chair is correct. We don't have any direct auspice over this, but we do work with Commissioner Kennermer all the time, who we work with on the wakeboarding issue as well.
Right, right.
There's a lot of issues on the river right now with noise and, you know, the side of the river, you know, kind of falling, you know, being decimated by wakeboarding, and I think that if it's, speaking for myself and not my colleagues, I do think that, you know, I'd be glad, as Commissioners, Chair Smith did, is get ahold of Senator Kennermer and talk to him and make sure that we can move this along at the state level, you know?
Thank you so much.
I think that's all we're asking, you're asking for today, is just let us be aware and any leverage we may have at the state to say, "Hey, this is a constituent issue that is affecting people in the county."
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Commissioner Shoal, you're up.
Yes, Mr. Stiggin, I want to thank you for your testimony this morning, and also I want to thank you for providing that very informative video on this problem. And finally, you know, as a citizen coming forward and identifying a problem, what you've done here is the most important thing a citizen can do, and that is to take action, speak up, and make a problem known. That's the first step in getting a problem solved, and thank you very much again for your time today.
Okay, you bet. I can't take direct credit for doing that. My neighbor, Mike Arthur, who's here.
Okay, we'll let him come up right now. Thank you, Rick. Next up is Scott Capes. Please come forward. State your name, area of residence, and you have three minutes.
My name is Scott Capus.
Capus, excuse me.
Capus. I live in unincorporated Clackamas County, on the river, right near Meldrum Bar. I stare at Meldrum Bar. And what I'm going to read to you today is nothing new. I think we're definitely surrounding the topic. I'll just provide a little more color. And you're right, Commissioner Savas, living on the river, it is, I mean, we have to shut our doors oftentimes in the summertime. It's unbearable, so. Thank you for your time to this important issue. Since last summer, myself and hundreds of other residents of Clackamas County have been working to get the State Marine Board to make a few changes to their rules regarding noise pollution on the Willamette River. This is partly in response to several professional two-stroke, that's, I mean, we're not worried about the nice new jet skis. We're talking about the two-stroke jet ski competitors that have turned the area literally into their own little motocross track. For 40 hours a week, oftentimes throughout the summer, they're jumping wakes and doing flips and all sorts of things. Right off Meldrum Bar, they don't leave. They tune up their machines on the beach. It's, I don't know if it's, if they're not allowed where they currently reside or what it is. Maybe in other states, I understand, some of these guys come from Washington because this is the only place they can do this. Anyways, the noise output to some of these activities far exceed what we believe is the state level of 85 decibels currently, so we're trying to get the State Marine Board to adjust that specifically in this area, but we know that these two, they don't stray very far. The stand-up jet skis, they don't stray very far. They're not running all the way down to downtown on these things. They like to stay in that area where it's very congested in the summertime. A lot of wakeboard boats and water skiers, and they jump waves and these type of things. So, let's see here. Basically, we've got a patchwork of laws and different colored, you know, the issues of noise. It's concerning to myself and obviously other neighbors that are not on the river, so we'll have some testimony there as well. Basically, we're looking to lower, try and lower the noise limit on the Willamette somehow or in the state to 75 decibels, similar to other states in the area. Basically, that is my testimony for now.
Thank you for that. You say you live in the Meldrum Bar area, an area of which I'm very familiar because my husband's a fisherman, and we often put our boat in there. And I am, I do understand the difference between the older two-strokes and the newer four-strokes.
Yes.
We have the newer four-strokes, but it's also an affordability issue for some people. You know, they may take out their jet skis one or twice a year, but I understand where you're coming from. So, these two gentlemen who testified, you're below the falls, obviously.
Below the falls.
And I'm wondering if any of this activity would be occurring above the falls, or Senator Kennermer lives above the falls too, and I suspect it will apply to both. So there's, you know, two different areas of consideration where you live and your, that river is hugely congested. I mean, you can't put a line in the water and troll without thinking it's going to get cut off. It's very, very busy, but it's the right of everybody to enjoy our rivers, right?
I agree.
I agree. It is a right, and we just need to maintain it going forward to try to have the best possible outcome for the people who use the rivers and live on the rivers, and I think this group is going to work very hard for that.
Well, thank you.
You betcha.
Any questions?
Martha Schrader, you're up.
Oh, sorry. No, Chair, I'm done.
You're done. Okay, sorry.
I'm good.
Thumbs up.
Thank you, Scott, for coming forward. We have your information here. Mike Arthur, you're next. Please come forward, state your name and your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
I'd love the opportunity to answer some of these questions that have come up, but my name is Mike Arthur. I live in West Lynn, 1665 Edgewater. What I'd like to do is just read this prepared statement. It's a bit different.
Sure, go ahead.
And it adds more context, and then I'd love to discuss further. All right. So, since last summer, myself and hundreds of other residents of Clackamas County have been working to get the Oregon State Marine Board to make a few changes to their rules regarding noise pollution on the Willamette River. This effort is partly response to a few professional two-stroke jet ski competitors that have turned the area off Meldrum Bar Park into their own professional training grounds for what can only be described as motocross in the water. For 40 hours a week during the spring and summer and into the fall, they practice for their freestyle-type competitions by basically doing flips for six to eight hours a day. The noise these activities creates is similar to a chainsaw revving all day, and it's decimating the quality of living for Clackamas County residents living within earshot of Meldrum Bar. The noise output from these activities violates the noise ordinance of all surrounding communities, such as West Lynn, Gladstone, and also the noise ordinance for all of Clackamas County. But on the water, as Chair Smith has mentioned, state rules render these local rules useless. Herein lies the issue. The state noise rules are inadequate at best. It's 84 decibels, one of the highest in the country. I'm sorry, I read the wrong section. Basically, Smith, Chair Smith, we're talking to you today because the Marine Board said if the county asks us to solve this issue, they will solve it. That's why we're speaking to the county today. We have the support from every city along the river, mayors, councilors of Lake Oswego, West Lynn, Milwaukee, many different representatives, but basically it comes down to the county because the county will be the body to enforce the, I'm sorry, it comes down to the recommendation and the help of the county because the county will be who enforces the rules. So, Oregon has the highest noise limit of any state in the west. Every other state has incorporated the decimal limits recommended by the agencies that specialize in the matter, the National Association of State Boating Law Administrators and the National Marine Manufacturers Association. The people who represent the people who make watercraft think our watercraft noise limits are too high, and they recommend 75 decibels as a shoreline noise limit. At 84 decibels, Oregon's noise limit is three times higher than this recommended level. That's quite concerning, especially when you consider that at 85 decibels, that's the noise limit that is determined by medical experts to be harmful to humans and wildlife. Most states have implemented this 75 decibel statewide, but a few either do it only in dense population zones or residential areas, near public parks, beaches, or busy waterways. Many states such as Washington also allow local jurisdictions to set their own limits and rules on the water. The fact that Oregon does not permit this is one of the reasons we need your help of the county to work with a state agency such as the Marine Board to solve this issue.
Thank you.
I have specific recommendations that, for changes, that every city has agreed to, and all the reps have mostly agreed to, that I'd like to present to the board. I've emailed them to you.
You can hand the paper to Gary or send us an email.
I have, I have.
So.
Yes.
I need to correct you on your testimony today.
Please do.
Because I'm a stickler for the facts, and I like accuracy to be the number one.
Okay.
As I stated earlier, this board has no authoritative jurisdiction to regulate noise on the Willamette River, and nor will we take up that. You need to contact Senator Bill Kennermer, the State Marine Board. They indeed will be making a decision on this. Our sheriff's department has said they will enforce the rules that come down. Clackamas County Board of Commissioners is not a law enforcement agency. We let the sheriff do that. So just, I want to understand how government works in this particular area. I think it's wonderful that the cities have noise ordinance. Obviously, they have heard from some of their residents. It's up to the cities because they are their own governing bodies to take this complaint to the State Marine Board as well. I did, when I first heard this, I contacted my state Senator Bill Kennermer because I knew he had knowledge in this. He is right now negotiating. There will be a plan that he says people will find pleasing, but the county sheriff will enforce it because that is our only jurisdictional authority in this. I want to be very clear.
I completely understand.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Savas, you're up.
Yeah, I think I kind of heard something maybe a little bit different, and it's a nuance, and maybe, you know, if Commissioner, or not Commissioner, if Senator Kennermer feels that we, you know, there would be a benefit to have the county ask for, not enforce, I think that's the distinction I think I heard this gentleman speak to. So if we can be a party to the request and coming from the county along with the cities, then I think we ought to be doing that. I think that's what your point was.
That's literally all I'm asking for.
Right, right.
I completely understand the jurisdictional issues.
Any commissioners free to contact Senator Kennermer, do whatever you want.
Absolutely, but the Marine Board is telling me to talk to the county. That's the only reason I'm here. Whether that's how government should work, we could debate that. I tend to agree with your understanding of the issue, but that's why I'm here, because since law enforcement in the county will be the ones to enforce these rules, their input and feedback to the Marine Board, along with the cities on what those rules should be, will be monumental.
Thank you, Mr. Arthur, for coming forward today, and we're going to move on because we have more people wanting to testify.
Thanks, Mike.
Chair, one other thing I did want to mention, and that is that it might be a good idea for us to speak with the sheriff's department and see if anyone's exceeding the 84 decibel limit, even though it's higher than people would like. I don't have the answer to that. What is the decimal rating that's currently, make sure that they're in compliance, even though it's higher than one would like.
That's the challenge.
But are we exceeding, are we exceeding 84 decibels?
That's the challenge, and I'd love to speak to that. Am I free to? That's the challenge, is that in order, all the state law says is 84 decibels. That's it. Every other noise ordinance, pretty much in the country, has some context into it. So in order to enforce this, somebody has to get on the boat, they have to get to a meter, with their meter, they have to go to a certain point at the shoreline, and then they clock them. Okay? So the problem with that is that that reading, that reading happened once after 200 calls from residents, and what that reading was, we were told by the county, was within state guidelines. So our challenge is the state guidelines. We later found out that that reading was 83 decibels. So that's one of the reasons why the laws are inadequate, and they're not dealing with the issue. I agree with your statement, Chair Smith, that everybody should be able to enjoy the river. What's really happening is there's about 10 people who are abusing loopholes in the rules and are making it impossible for anybody else to enjoy the river. Fishermen, other boaters who are like responsibly respecting, you know, the residents, everybody. They've overtaken Meldrum Bar Park for their own professional aspirations in crafts that are designed to avoid laws.
Sir, you have made your point, sir. We need to move on. We have commissioners that want to speak to this.
Understood. I appreciate it.
Commissioner, you're up.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Smith. I think this board could agree that we would support lowering the decibel requirement to a level that is not unhealthy for individuals and wildlife.
That will come as through our normal course of business, which means it goes to issues, and then it becomes a policy discussion of which we would take action. I am not going to do that until I hear from the state governing bodies on a decision that's made, but thank you for that.
Yeah, I mean, I would support that if other commissioners would just want to weigh in and say, "I support that, I support that, I support that." Put our thumbs up, then we can at least give this group words that adds.
Commissioner, Fisher, I have asked that we not take a vote on this. I would appreciate it if you would abide by the rules that this commission has been working on. I think it's very clear that we all are sympathetic and have compassion for this issue, and we are working on it. Thank you very much.
Could I say the three rule changes?
Sir, please, we need to move on. You have emailed us, you have emailed us. I think we're in support of this situation, and you understand. Thank you very much.
Okay, apologies.
Next up to testify is Les Poole. Come state your name, area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Les Poole. I haven't been here in weeks, but I'm a regular, I guess you'd call me. A couple things on my mind. One of them is towing, and I'm sure we'll hear more about that. We don't, I wouldn't have enough time right now to get into what really needs to be discussed, so I look forward to the possibility of another forum and more public engagement with the state and specifically here with the county. And make no mistake that our friends at Metro that are controlling regional transportation and planning are fully supportive of what's going on, and I find that very troubling. It's budget season. It's also an election season, and revenues are up. I look forward to seeing the drafted budget and reaching a point where we are doing what should have been happening a few years ago, and that is making darn sure we don't pass any more unsustainable budgets. I can so recall Commissioner Savas pleading as the board in the past knowingly approved budgets that were unsustainable, and that reflection is on Commissioner Fisher, Commissioner Schrader, and the past board. Mr. Shoal, Chair Smith, we're not here at the time, and I want to thank Paul for doing a good job, because with all of the confusion that goes on, what really matters is how you're managing our money. I have one other subject, and that is Tuesday, there was a discussion about Reimagine Oregon. You know, there's so many groups out there that have great names. Sometimes a group is formed and it gets off course. Sometimes it doesn't, but in this case, it's Reimagine Oregon, and I'm very troubled by the thought that the county needs to have some type, or members of the board believe the county should have an affiliation, no matter how vague or simple or any type of potential endorsement of an organization that was behind and fully supports defending our police. That is failed policy. That is wild idealism, and we saw the results of that. We saw an organization that repeatedly has supported policies that led to riots, led to poor response, increased crime, and all of the negatives that we're fighting. So I would recommend that we distance ourselves from Reimagine Oregon. A strong recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the cards I have for in-person testimony. Do we have any more in the basket? Do not see that. Thank you very much. Shannon, do we have any online registrants, and how many?
We do. We currently have three people who are registered to speak online. We currently have three people who are registered to speak online.
And please tee that up.
Thank you. So I do have that list of registered participants. If any was on Zoom but did not have a chance to register ahead of time and would like to testify, please select the raise hand feature, and I'll call on the registered participants first, and then raised hands in the order they were received. First up is Angela Nyland. Angela, please unmute yourself, state your name and area of residence, you'll have three minutes.
Good morning, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Okay, great. Good morning, commissioners. My first question comes up of what can the board do to help us with abandoned motor homes that are starting to appear, oh, I'm from Boring, in unincorporated Clackamas County on Clackamas County roads? They've been reported, they've been tagged, but nothing happens, and they stay for quite some time. We had one last summer that was actually torched by someone to get rid of it because they're hazardous, you know, it's hazardous, and they shouldn't have set it on fire. We've had another one this year that was already set on fire over by Ashley's, and we have three more vehicles that are parked on Clackamas County roads, but they don't get towed away. You know, they're reported, they're tagged, but they just sit there, and I'm hoping that the board can do something about that. Second topic is the PPP for the board. That is so important to everyone in Clackamas County, for the current board and for Clackamas County Board going forward. In April of last year, Mr. Madcor spoke about the importance of having board rules. The board was on board to update the document he had distributed. I do know it was put on hold because budget was coming up. It was put on hold till summer, you know, budgets come up again, so after budget was done, by the end of fourth quarter, to my knowledge, only three commissioners had updated that document, and Mr. Madcor, thank you for sending that out to me last year. And I read the new PPP document. I'm concerned that the items from the document from 2021 are not in that document. So I'm wondering, is the board actively working on updates to this document? And was it voted to remove everything that everybody worked on last year? Because it is, it's very important to set expectations for everyone in the community. And also, thank you for the vote on not getting on board with Reimagine Oregon. Everything I've read on them is not in line with the values of Clackamas County that I see. If their website needs updating, they must have organizational issues, and I wouldn't want us to realign with someone who hasn't got their information up to date. Thank you very much, that's all I have.
Thank you, Angela Nyland. As a matter of fact, I do have some updates before commissioners chime in on this. I'm prepared to make an update. But regarding board rules, we did schedule that. We had it scheduled last week, and frankly, we ran out of time. Because, you know, commissioners, if you want to talk a lot on the issues, and you can see what's on the agenda, you know, we have people that want to leave at noon, we have adequate time set aside, but we didn't get to it. When is that scheduled again, Gary?
We're looking at April thirteenth, or April thirteenth.
Yeah, we scheduled that. She mentioned a PCP, did I hear that right? I don't know what that means.
PPP, Policy Protocol and Procedures.
Oh, the three Ps, got it, okay. Now, regarding abandoned RVs, I had scheduled an issues update to go to a work session on that within a couple weeks, because I really do want to see that problem resolved. And since then, staff came back to me, oh, can we put that off? Because we have discovered that we have different departments in Clackamas County who are working on this issue, maybe independently of what we thought. Now, Stephen Madcor, we had about $25,000 in your budget to work on this, is that right?
It was county administration budget. We asked for it a few years ago, and we've been using it judiciously to remove the most obtrusive and dangerous and problematic RVs. RVs are about a hundred bucks a foot to dispose of, they're about a thousand bucks to tow. You have a variety of legal processes to do, sometimes they're inhabited, sometimes they still have registrations, and you have to give the prior owner or the registered owner notice, and you have to store it for thirty-day time period. Storage lots are full. This is a problem that's exploded in Portland, and it's just finding its way into our jurisdiction as well. So we're working with code enforcement. Sheriff's Office is mapping and tagging these on a regular basis. We do take complaints from residents, so we're involved with it, but it is scattered with code enforcement, sustainability, county admin, and the Sheriff's Office. It's like multifaceted right now. We don't have answers, it's a question of how much money do you have to dispose of these things?
And the chart that I looked at, I was going to share with my commissioners, but we want to have some more organizational information. The cost to tow one of these abandoned vehicles with all the goodies that you listed is between eighteen hundred and three thousand dollars per vehicle, and then, like you say, we have to keep it for three months. We have to make sure there are no people on it, and it requires a lot of agencies. Is there a jurisdictional issue with this? Can we tow, can Clackamas County tow abandoned vehicles, for instance, that's within city limits? Do we take on that authority, or is that up to the city limit people?
I think that, again, depends on the nature of the vehicle itself. I think the Sheriff's Office certainly could tow within a city jurisdiction, but when it comes to an RV, oftentimes they're abandoned there, and that would probably be the jurisdiction of the city right there.
Okay, Gary, I would like you to speak to this about the budget implications going forward, because I was going to ask for some money to be directed to this. If the citizens of the county want this, then we do have some pots of money here and there, and could you speak to that?
Yeah, so commissioners, you authorized last year for us to spend $25,000 of general funds in the county administrator's office, my administrator fund, on this effort. What surprised me is there are other pockets of money that departments have available for this purpose, and I didn't know that, and I don't think you did either, which is why Chair Smith is allowing us some staff time to coordinate what pots of money are available, where are they at, how can we combine these pots of money. But yes, we have funding available, and we'll come back to you on how much we'll ask you for from either general fund or other dedicated sources of funds that we could use so that we could provide this service.
Is it possible that we can identify the amount of abandoned RVs that exist now, so we know how much it would cost to do that?
Yes.
Is it possible, I'm sorry, that we could identify the amount of RVs that are out there, so we could know approximately how much money is needed, and then really have an organized, concerted effort to go out and do this? Commissioner Savas, you're up.
Yeah, I didn't want to speak about the RVs, but I'll cover it really quickly and say that it's definitely a growing problem in the county. I have a friend of mine who owns property, business properties in both Portland and Clackamas County, and he actually identified one vehicle that was near his property in Portland that suddenly showed up here in Clackamas County.
Really?
And sat on the side of the road. So as Portland does its sweeps, sometimes those things end up here, and that's unfortunate. What I really wanted to talk about was Angela's first, well, I don't know if it was her first point, but the one about the board rules. So Chair Smith and I made some edits to a board rules document, and that was the one, I think, that gets us closest to where we want to go, and I've been working with legal counsel both last week and this week, and trying to get that codified. I think there was instruction to at least codify that as, so it could be a working draft with the strikeouts removed, so we can, you know, maybe work on that versus the document that came forth to us here recently, which I didn't even recognize it because all that stuff was deleted. So I would certainly like to make traction on it. It's been a long time. This has been on the books a long time, and I'm hoping we can, you know, put that to bed and have rules. I think it's very important for us to know, you know, especially when even something as basic as, whether it's Sturgis or procedures and rules, or whether it's Robert's Rules of Order, when someone's speaking, you know, on a board and they have the floor, they have the floor, and there's rules to that, and there's also a lot of other rules. So I think that we may need to make sure that the word, you know, may use or may reference, you know, whether it's Robert's Rules or Sturgis, it should be that it is the standard practice, not that it may be used. So that's just one example. I would like to get some traction on that and get that resolved. It keeps on coming back, but without any traction. So I just ask that we just get a clean version, if I need to take ownership of it, I'm fine. Put my name on it, but I think we have a better working document that better aligns with what we're trying to do, then we can talk about option one or two or three, whatever it may be, but that's my request. Thank you.
And what's going to be required, commissioners, for this to pass is a unanimous vote on five-oh, because we all need to be in agreement with every single rule. I talked with Commissioner Shoal about the document he too is going to address an issue that he wants on it, which is fine, but not one commissioner is going to get everything they want, including me. I feel I've been very flexible as chair. I've had this scheduled many times, and I do need my full commission in attendance at these meetings for as long as it takes to do county business. We've been very remiss in that, and that's why this hasn't been done. But thank you very much. Shannon, who's the next caller?
Next up is Christine Kennedy. Christine, please unmute yourself, state your name and area of residence, you have three minutes.
Good morning, my name is Christine Kennedy. I live in Lake Oswego, Clackamas County, and I've been in the area for seven years. Good morning, Chair Smith, County Commissioners, Administrator Schmidt. I just want to say that this has been a very difficult last two years. I know that we all want to be done with COVID, and I guess I want to say that COVID is just not a single thing. It's really impacted so many areas of everybody's life that I guess I would just encourage you all to really consider the pain that the people in your county have been through, and what can you do as leaders to help us heal. Clearly, there's a lot of complexity trying to create rules that you're going to have everybody agree to when there's some basic disagreement. Policies, protocols, procedures, basically, y'all have to make a commitment to work together and really address the things that are really crucial. It's important to collaborate, it's important to have realistic expectations. I do want to speak to the Reimagine Oregon discussion. I thought it was not helpful that Chair Smith labeled this organization as being a left-wing organization. I think that's really unproductive as a county chair, sitting on the dais when your role really is to be nonpartisan. It's a really deep and heavy conversation about how we're going to move forward together as a county. I did object to Commissioner Shoal's comment about institutional racism. It is not conscious. If people think that institutional racism is a conscious issue, you are missing the point. It is often unconscious. There are many submerged issues, and as Chair Smith said one time, we all came from a special place as kids. What did we grow up with? What were our influences? Right now, my recommendation to you is, we need to move forward, create trust, and I wish you all the best of luck. Thank you.
Up next, Shannon? Up next is Bill Weir. Bill, please unmute yourself, state your name and area of residence, you have three minutes.
Yes. Good morning, commissioners, Bill Weir, Damascus. I want to express my appreciation to the majority of this commission that voted to disassociate with Reimagine Oregon, particularly to Chair Smith, who called for the motion. The commission then went and agreed to reconsider its position on this matter in a future date if and when Reimagine Oregon would soften its position on defunding the police and correct its website. If or when that day comes, I'd like the commission to also look into the following, and I'll go from their website. They say, quote, "In quite literally every aspect of American society, black lives are shown they don't matter," unquote. That's a blanket statement, and we should be given specifics as to how this pertains to Clackamas County and what areas we're not addressing before accepting the premise. Your efforts need to be focused on Clackamas County. They also say, quote, "That's when we took matters into our own hands." There's no mention of the widespread destruction and violence at the time. The policy of restoration of loss to people who lost businesses and jobs, to me, in order to have a dialogue, there needs to be common understanding of the problem. They also address decriminalizing fare evasion in public transportation. Isn't this giving a pass on petty crime? I doubt if any of you on commission rely on the bus for transportation, but how about the working people and retirees who see their fares go up? And what is this group's position on other crimes that are also deemed lesser? Defunding the transit police? What about public safety? Mandating restorative justice practices in Oregon public schools? If I remember, the Broward County school shooter was the beneficiary of restorative justice multiple times before he shot up the school. How do we educate and develop our children is critical. One size fits all doesn't work, and each school district is different. Parents need a voice in how their children are educated. This theory needs scrutiny and compared to other theories before signing on to it. So this group's attitude to blame the police is unacceptable, but there's more that needs to be looked into if you want to reinstate this group. And just one last thing, some of you emphasize that their website is not up to date and reflects incorrect information. This gives the appearance of not caring. Now, for a year, I've requested the county administrator and the commission to post the Zoom history of the Lettich Committee online. You either claim it's done, or we'll look into it, or just ignore it. I still believe it needs to be done. Thank you.
Gary, do you want to address the last comment about our website?
Mr. Weir has been very persistent in his request that we post one particular advisory board Zoom meetings, the Leaders in Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. I've shared this information with you, commissioners. Those meetings that are recorded on Zoom, yes, they're posted online for every advisory board. I'm not picking one out, we do it for all of them, and we are doing that. Those that do not record their meetings are not, and we instead have minutes or data that's recorded of how that meeting acted, what business was conducted during that meeting. We're very consistent. We're not picking one out of the rest, they all get the same, and we're doing that on the county website.
Does the EDI have recorded Zoom meetings?
The Leaders in Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion do not record their meetings on Zoom.
They have minutes, written minutes.
Written minutes of the meetings, correct.
This is an advisory board?
It is.
So I'm confused on this. I thought Governor Brown said that as we return back from COVID, that high bread would be available in all of our meetings. Am I misunderstanding that, Stephen?
Not really. The law requires the governing body to do it, but the best practice is to have it applicable to A, B, and C's, but it means that they would have access to the meeting by video or telephone. So somebody could hear the meeting by a speakerphone, for example. Or if it is a live broadcast, such as this one, they would be able to see it visually. But there is no requirement that the ABCs have Zoom access on every meeting.
Okay. Is that clear?
Yes.
Okay, good enough. Thank you for your answers on that. Shannon, who's up next?
That is the end of my list, Chair, thank you.
Oh, that's the end, okay, great, wonderful. Good communications today. I will now close the public communication portion of this meeting, and Gary, I believe the county administrator's updates are next.
It does. I always like to cleanse the palate with my reports, so let me do that. This is the good things happening here in Clackamas County with our programs and our employees. This one is for transportation and development. Our transportation program safety manager, Joe Merrick, recently presented to the hamlet of Beaver Creek on several safety road projects occurring in that community, including the intersection of Redland Road and Fisher's Mill Road, new road signs in the area, and summer plans for a three-way intersection of Beaver Creek, Camrith, and Leland Roads. Joe is so well-received, the chair of the Beaver Creek Hamlet, Tammy wrote this note to our staff. "Joe, I believe we'll need to award you the Most Responsive and Caring Guest Speaker Award. Thank you for hearing our concerns and getting back to us so quickly. You are a star, rave reviews. Thank you for your preparation, wonderful and informative presentation, great community responses, and fun sense of humor. Our board is incredibly appreciative, you rock. Look forward to hearing from you again this fall." So thank you, Tammy, for the note, thank you to Joe for your service, and that's what all county employees strive to do, is to deliver outstanding service and be responsive to our community. Thank you, Chair.
Is that it, Gary?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Now, we will open it up to Commissioner Communications. Commissioner- Commissioner Savis, you're up first.
Great. Yeah, I wanted to talk a little bit about our conversation on Tuesday. And we kind of touched on it here today with our EDI group. And when Mr. Wheatfall was with us, I would, you know, walk into his office and just touch base with him and ask him, you know, what was happening and how we can really involve folks externally, not so much internally. I think we're doing a great job. I've been doing a lot of internal stuff. And since then, we've really upped our involvement with increasing the capacity on the administrative side under Martine's leadership. So thank you, Martine. And after Tuesday, it struck me that, you know, I would really like to have or see or better understand, you know, our external outreach to communities of color to make sure that we're hearing their voices and understand that, as opposed to necessarily -- I'm not saying opposed to, I mean, but, you know, if we're going to have organizational groups that are advocating for those, whether they're Latino groups or African-American groups, whatever they are, that I think really the community at large, not necessarily groups, but the community at large that is more citizen-based, like a lot of our things are, would be, you know, a good voice, I think. Where it's not really, there's not really a effort to lobby, if you will, at the state level, or there's not the mechanisms, if you will, to be more political about it, but more down-to-earth. What is, what's happening to you today? How can we help? How can Clackamas County be a more welcoming place to all people? And I think it might even help break down some of the misunderstandings and interpretations of what, you know, I know that, you know, again, all respect to every one of my colleagues up here. I think Christine Kennedy did touch on something that is correct, in my opinion, and that is that there's really, I won't say it's invisible, but it's really what we don't see or what's not written, in which people are treated differently or perhaps harmed. And I think that is the part that is hard to grasp. Is it a system that we can touch that's got detail and framework around it? Not really, no. No, it's not really that. Sure, there might be that. And I think that's where we always look at our policies and how we can improve them to make sure that everyone's treated equally and fairly. And so it's both. But I think what, you know, a lot of the challenges we face, and you have to live with it or live it to really understand what that is. I, in my earlier life, I mentioned this before, I had to come to the defense of a lot of people that were, I felt abused and had to stand up for them because I felt it was quite unfair. So I, growing up with that and seeing it, it was real. And I think it's still abundant today. I mean, we had the event out here at the corner with the swastika that was painted that made the news. So we know that there's still some level of that happening. We can't deny that. And we don't know where it all is and every time. And unfortunately, this stuff happens, and we're going to do our best as leaders to get in front of it and make sure it doesn't happen on our watch here at the county level. But I think there's some things, again, my point is, I think we need to do more externally. And I think frankly, a lot of elected officials should be part of that kind of discussion or forum to where we're talking through those things and trying to better understand that and at least making some of those people that feel impacted and hearing their stories, I think, would be valuable. So we can shed some light on what's not really visible, what people really can't touch or see that is somewhat a system that has been, that is somewhat there, even though it's not maybe prescribed with clarity. So those are my comments for today, and I hope to reach out to our staff and encourage them to maybe look at that a little bit better and look at an external, again, an external-based outreach or form of a committee that is 100% dedicated to that effort. That's what I have for today. Oh, one other thing. I did want to talk, I know that Commissioner Scholl had quite the interesting impact meeting. Yep, he's going to talk about that.
Yep.
I do want to say, just to give a little bit of a segue, that I was just bombarded with phone calls yesterday, almost all this week, end of the evening after the meeting, and this morning, all the way over here this morning, on people that watched that meeting or were concerned in advance about what was going to happen at the meeting. So I won't steal his thunder, but I just want to say that it has garnered a lot of attention, so it's certainly at a top of mind. So thank you.
Thank you for teeing that up. Up next is Commissioner Schrader.
Oh, great. I thought it was going to be Commissioner Scholl after that.
Well, I'm just going in order. I don't want to upset anybody.
I know, no, don't. I never get upset. You want to, why don't we go to Commissioner?
Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Just want me up? Okay, all right. All right, let me get started here today with something. Are we having fun yet?
Continue.
I will, I will. All right. I did want to mention today that March 29th was officially, I'm going to pull up the information here, a pretty important day for our veterans because it was chosen as National Vietnam War Veterans Day because on March 29th, 1973, the Military Assistance Command Vietnam, MACW, was disbanded and the last U.S. combat troops departed in the Republic of Vietnam. The last unit was elements of MACV's Infantry Security Force, a special guard, actually special couriers. And on March 29th, 2012, at that time, President Barack Obama proclaimed March 29th as Vietnam Veterans Day. And so I just want to remind people that generationally, you know, that was the war I grew up with, all the way from junior high school through, actually, in 1972, I was a sophomore in college. And, or actually, '73, I was a junior in college. And I think it's very important for us to remember that war. It impacted a generation of folks, and I think that it has enabled us to really understand what conflict does to people. And since then, we've had other multiple conflicts, Iraq, Afghanistan, Desert Storm, all of those kinds of spots that we send individuals to protect our country, protect our values, protect other folks and cultures. And we have to remember that when our folks come back, that we should show them respect and decency. And should they suffer additional issues from being in a war zone and experiencing any kind of trauma, that we should be there to help them. So I'll never forget, I'll never forget that. I'll never forget how that war changed a generation of people, including family and friends, my brother-in-law. I have lots of stories of Vietnam, but I won't go into that today. But March 29th lets us remember that. And also, I would suggest people go to the Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs website. I get feeds from them all the time. The other thing they are recognizing this month is women in the military, and they have vignettes and information about women who have served this country, why they've served, how they've served, their stories. And so go to ODVA, Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs website. If you can get on their Facebook feed, you will continually get information on the history of our military as well as the people who have served us. So I think that's good. Next thing I want to talk about, I want to give a shout out to Water and Environment Services. They were here today. They're one of my favorite departments because each year, pretty much, they clean 7 billion gallons of water, and they convert materials that have long been considered waste into natural energy and fertilizer. And they are really instrumental in preventing pollution in local rivers, streams, and wetlands caused by stormwater runoff. So they are extremely important to us. They also have a very significant education component where they will go out with volunteers and other folks and do water restoration work, educate people on, you know, what it takes to get clean water. They are really one of the best environmentally great agencies and groups that we work with here in the county. So shout out to them. They were on our, they're on our piece today when we were, you know, going through some of our department issues. The other thing is that both Commissioner Savis and I were in the Good Shepherd Village, let's see, the other day, what day was it? I don't even know anymore. It's just everything's running together. It was Monday, okay? A long time ago, a long time ago. And this is a village that is being pulled together by Catholic charities, and it is in Happy Valley, and it is affordable housing that will be serving 60% and below area medium income as well as 30% and below. Am I right, Paul? Okay, area medium income. And they will also be offering wraparound services to people who have had barriers to housing to make sure that they can sustain their housing. And they also have property, I believe, in Sandy and Malala. So keep an eye open for that, Chair Smith. And can be, too. Because for me, I think that's great because it's starting to serve our rural areas with housing as well. So let's give kudos to Catholic charities and Good Shepherd Village. The other thing that is making me feel very ancient is that tomorrow, April 1st, is the 20th anniversary of the Children's Center. And I was here when there was no Children's Center, and I remember working with Providence and our DA at the time, John Foote, and a lot of other volunteers in the community to actually get that off the ground. And 20 years later, it's one of our most prominent nonprofits. They really work with children who have been sexually assaulted and abused and, I think, are one of the keystones of what we do here in this county. So tomorrow, from 5:00 to 7:00, they're going to be having an open house for their 20th anniversary, and that really dates me. But there you go. The other thing I just want to do today, too, is to thank our folks from our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Office. They are tasked with moving us through very difficult conversations and hard things that we're all trying to confront and understand with significant patience and grace. So I want to thank them the other day, with their job is probably one of the most difficult jobs in this county as we navigate through what we need to be doing for our constituents, our communities of color here in Clackamas County. So Gary, let's give them a big thank you for the work they do. And I hope that our difficult conversations the other day, that they will understand that all of us have really are attempting to do the right thing at the right time, in the right way, for every community in this county. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Fisher, you're up.
Thank you, Chair Smith. I cannot let this moment go by without correcting for the record that Commissioner Schrader and I did not vote for unsustainable budgets. I'm looking at Gary Schmidt, our county administrator, and channeling the former county administrator, which was Don Krupp. Our budgets have been balanced. They have identified revenue and identified expenditures, created a plan, which is a vision for how we operate in Clackamas County. And every step of the way, there has been substantial contingencies and reserves, which has given us a triple bond rating in this county for sound fiscal management. So if there's any thought out there that Clackamas County has not been fiscally sound in the past or moving into the future, I want to correct that. And I also want to express that I am actually, this is kind of a funny thing. I don't know if my other Commissioners will agree. I'm really looking forward to this budget cycle. We have new members of the Budget Committee that are joining us. I'm looking forward to getting to know them. I am looking forward immensely to having these conversations in person, which is something that we have not been able to do very well within this sort of hybrid COVID world. I, it's coming up, folks. We've got, when is it, Gary? Middle of May, towards the end of May, we will be in our hearings.
End of May.
Yeah. And our staff, I see Rod Cook right here in the back. I know he's busy working on budget. I know our directors are busy working, our county administrator, as much as he doesn't talk about these things all the time, he's working really hard with our staff to get us prepared for what is probably our most important jobs as Commissioners, is being accountable for the dollars. And thank goodness, we have Citizen Budget Committee members that are engaged and want to do that. So much of what we do relies on our connection and our relationship with members of our community. Was very pleased to see members of the community come in today and ask for our advocacy and support on unhealthy decibel levels. Want to encourage Commissioners in to come to the Leaders in Equity and Diversity Council for our outward facing. While the members of that council do advise the county and the county commission, they are from all across our community, and the discussions and conversations are very thoughtful and enlightening. So please put those meetings on your calendar. They're very informative. So with that, I will end my comments, but thank you, Chair Smith, for the opportunity to share today.
Of course. You know, when we have short business meetings like this, it allows Commissioners, I think, more time to give updates on important issues they're working on. And I have asked, as Paul did, Commissioner Scholl to have a complete report of your IMPACT meeting last night. And Sarah, you are up.
Yes, thank you, Chair Smith, and good morning, people of Clackamas County. I'm going to forego talking about the six other subjects I was going to talk to you about today and focus on tolling. I've been a Commissioner for 15 months now, and for every month of that time, tolling has been an issue. We are now at a critical point in Clackamas County on tolling. Two weeks ago, at the Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation, or JPAC, Commissioner Savis, after a year of hard work to protect the interests of Clackamas County, he made a motion not to toll all lanes and not to toll I-205 before the rest of the region. He didn't even get a second. Despite his hard work, despite his very convincing arguments to support that motion, JPAC voters didn't support it. Last night, at the Metro Policy Advisory Committee, or IMPACT, which is comprised of 21 voting members from cities, counties, special districts, and the public, we looked at the Regional Transportation Plan Amendment that JPAC looked at two weeks ago. And I made a motion not to toll all lanes and to have non-told lanes available 24/7 and uninterrupted. It got a straw poll, didn't even go to a motion, but in the straw poll, I got three yeses to support it and 11 noes. And I want to say that the Counselor Brett Sherman from Happy Valley and Mr. Ed Gronke and myself were the three yeses. 11 noes. In other words, those other folks wanted to have all lanes told, and their regard for how tolling would affect people who are poor, that have to use I-205, didn't seem to be an issue. So they wanted to toll all lanes. Then Counselor Brett Sherman, to his credit, made a motion regarding how to sunset the tolling at a point in time, and that was voted down. 11 noes, the three yeses. And guess who the three yeses were? Brett Sherman, Ed Gronke, and myself. Again, it's, we were all amazed, the three of us were, that this body, IMPACT, could look at tolling without any regard to when it was going to end. So the other thing I wanted to mention this morning was, a couple of months ago, Senator Bill Kenimer put a bill to the legislature to bring tolling to a vote of the people of the state of Oregon, which failed. So where are we now? I think every citizen in Clackamas County needs to know that currently today, ODOT is on a glide path to toll I-205 and to toll it before is on a glide path to toll I-205 and to toll it before the rest of the region without any end state when tolling will end. How can we move forward? What's the next step? You know, I'm not really sure. I'll discuss this with Commissioner Savis, maybe he's got some ideas, on what the next step we can take on the road ahead on this tolling issue to protect the people, not only of Clackamas County, but the region, the state, and anybody on the West Coast who comes through our county on I-205. I believe that every citizen needs to make a noise on this. Contact their state representative and their state senator to keep pushing back on ODOT until we get some level of compromise with ODOT on tolling. We fear that tolling will be expensive. ODOT has not stated how expensive it will be to drive on I-205 once tolling begins. We are concerned about how that tolling funds will be used to actually improve capacity on our roads for our citizens. And we're, again, concerned about, will it never end once it starts? We here at Clackamas County, like I said, have been fighting this issue for a year. Will continue to fight it, but we need to have the citizens of the county and the region make a noise at this time. And I think that's all I have to say on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shoal, for the update. I'm sure we'll have more conversations as we go forward. And please, Commissioners Savis and Shoal, please continue to update the board on this. I hope we have time next Tuesday under issues if anything new has come up. I appreciate Commissioner Fisher talking about in-person budget meeting. You know, last year, our Budget Committee met in person, and we'll continue that this year, and I, too, look forward to that. Commissioners, you know, I appreciate all the hard work that all of us do, and sometimes it gets difficult. We tend to maybe not stay within what we need to do. And that's why during the noise and sun the river, of course, we're all passionate on it, but, you know, this BC operates under a procedural process, and it works well. It is also a process that residents can count on for transparency. I would not want to pass an ordinance today or any thought of, oh, 85 decimals is wrong, without going through the normal process where people can come forward and testify and do for. I think it's going to get fixed. We all are passionate about it. I understand that. Also, we have in our script a procedure of things of order. I screwed up a few things today because, quite frankly, when we get into the hearing, there's also a second reading of the number. I forgot to do that. But at the same time, I'm also juggling a lot of issues as I sit here at the dais. I appreciate my commissioners following the script and helping me as well as we go forward. We have some good news. Damages from the 2020 Labor Day wildfire on Highway 224 out of Estacada up the Clackamas River, and we have an update. Mile Pulse 36 continues, there's a big crane there, and they're removing a series of mesh panels which will restrain future rock slides. And mesh is also needed in other areas because there are rocks falling down because the highway goes here. Right next to it is a rock cliff, many areas. And when that burned, the heat created rock and it disintegrated, and that's still coming down. So it's still not safe for folks to drive on, but ODOT says they're going to continue the rock scaling. The log decks and brush piles are being removed. There was a lot of trees that had to be taken out and logged, and they were just stacked up along the road because they had no place to put them. Crews are working this week, starting to inspect the sites and consider the necessary restoration work to the ground that was burned badly. The U.S. Forest Service will continue the cleanup at the hole in the wall and the Moore Creek Boat Access Day sites. They will be open to river users after the road opens on May 1st. So I think all of our recreationists should be happy that possibly by Memorial Weekend, one of the busiest weekends for recreation in the state, that will be open. Pothole patching is still underway, although full paving of the road won't take place until later in the summer. For further information, you can go to the Mount Hood National Forest Fire Recovery or the wildfire recovery website for more information on any of those. Big things are happening at Government Camp. The United States Forest Service has approved the Timberline Master Development Plan, MDP, and is intended to be guiding, the guiding document for future development at Timberline. This MDP exclusively evaluates facilities at the resort that are directly related to the ski operation. The highlights of that plan include, one, the Timberline Gondola, and that has been talked about for years, a gondola from Timberline down to Government Camp area. Secondly, upgraded guest services facility at Summit Pass. I believe that includes possible relocation of the restrooms that have been there before. This board in the previous action made sure that was restored once it was closed, and I think everybody is happy about that as well. You can view the 2022 Timberline Master Development Plan, and there is a link here to that. If anybody is interested, you can Google that or contact the BCC offices. And just so as a reminder, the Timberline Lodge is on the south slope of Mount Hood. It was constructed in 1937 and is at the 6,000-foot elevation, and that's where I learned to ski. It's a national historic landmark and is still being used for its original intent. It is indeed a magnificent ski lodge and mountain retreat for everyone to enjoy. That's all I have to say. Commissioners, thank you for your comments. This was a very productive meeting, and seeing no other further business, this meeting is adjourned.